Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 24th Board of Education meeting. I would ask you all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is delightful. It is recognition of our Foreign Affairs Club, which placed eighth in the nation, and I will turn this over to Mr. Dade.
Thank you. We wanted to take a moment to celebrate the astounding performance of our Foreign Affairs Club. So we have in the audience, hopefully, all four of our Rockstar students. I read a little bit about what it takes to perform in this competition, and I became much more humbled after reading about halfway through about what the students were asked to do against the nation's very best. So this is no small feat to place eighth in the entire nation. So we would like to recognize tonight the members of that team. Ms. Isabella Crowe, if you could stand. Ms. Anna Leba. Alexandra Raposo. And Josh Sandler. Great job, great job. I'm going to come by and give you your certificates.
Oh, you had parents back here, too. Thank you all very much. Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors. If there's anyone who would wish to address the board, we would ask you to come up to one of the microphones, please state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Okay, thank you. Committee updates. Are there any board committees that need to or would like to update? Brendan, is there anything you'd like to update us with?
Communication Committee will be sleeping for the next month.
And we thank you for the really excellent job with the videos and getting the word out about the budget vote. So thank you very much to everyone who was involved with that. John, I don't think there's anything yet to update you. I know you have a meeting coming up.
Meeting for the Audit Committee is June 3rd via Zoom, 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Larry, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you all. Next would be the Superintendent's Update. Mr. Dade.
Thank you. So just briefly, by way of our students, hopefully, you gleefully had to drive around to find a parking spot. There's nothing better than a busy and active high school in the evening, which is our norm. So to have buses and cars and student athletes and other students all around just really made me happy this evening. I've been able to take part in watching tons of sports over the past few weeks to cheer on our student athletes, but there was no sport greater than participating in the 25th Annual Spelling Bee. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that while I did not place, I'm not quite sure that it was entirely fair. So I'm not sure it was representative of my true spelling prowess, but it was great to join Josh and the amazing cast of The Spelling Bee. Ms. Arginio served as a guest in one of the shows, so it was a lot of fun. Great to see families out supporting our drama club. So again, as we reflect on this year, we spend a lot of times in these meetings talk about the things that aren't going well, based on some opinions, but we are really, really happy with ending this year strong with a return to a much more normal for our students. One last update that I just want to bring the board and the community up to date on. With the UPK funding, Megan, Harvey, and I have already met with four community-based organizations. We've toured facilities, met directly with the directors and their staff, asked questions about curriculum and the like, and very equally important, given them an opportunity to understand what the process is based on our understanding up until now. If you can imagine, you all know our organizations that serve four-year-olds in our community, they couldn't be more different. So there is not going to be a straightforward process here. There's questions that are still remaining with regards to capacity of the different venues. You have to have a certain seating capacity if you're going to expand or make it work with your current facility. There's questions with regards to a lot of our organizations have already established who their families and students are for next year. So the question for the state is, if you already have students in these facilities, how does the funding work with existing families? So would we have to do a completely different lottery for next year? So the next step for us, we have one more organization that we're meeting with next week, and that's based on those organizations within our district boundaries that serve Cornwall students. They're on the approved Office of Family and Office of Children and Family Services. In addition to, we've also met with an organization who wasn't on the list, and we've actually worked with them to make sure that they were on the list. So this has really been a great partnership. We will be getting an RFP together to establish the criteria that we'll utilize, and we've told each director that they would get that information, what the deadlines are, and then we would go from there. So still some unanswered questions with regards to can we make this happen and when, but we know that we're continuing to move it along. But the visits to these organizations have been have been great. Any questions on that piece?
Well, just one, Terry. You brought up the curriculum part of it. Are we, will we be, let's assume, you know, we go with an external provider, third-party provider, would we use their staff or would we contribute to that staff?
It would be utilization of their staff. We're responsible for making sure that they maintain appropriate staffing ratios, which is two staff members for every 18 students.
Got it, thank you.
Terry, is there enough dollars that have been allocated for this to cover all the kids that would be in the pre-K program in the district?
Yeah, great, great question on two fronts. One, definitely not. If we take our incoming kindergartners, Megan is at around 220, so we would need funding for approximately 220 seats as a maximum. Not every family would sign up for a four-year-old program. Some prefer to stay at home and things of that nature, but we know that 60 doesn't come close to it. The other realization that we have, that I'm glad that John raised this question, is the per-student funding does not cover the tuition that most of these places charge for the year. So we'd also have to be looking at a supplement for families of, and we're asking that of the state, if it's this amount per child, can the Carty family supplement it for the rest of the amount owed? That way, it's less of a cost for the family, but it will absolutely not cover the full cost of most of the tuition rates.
Okay, thank you. My update. First, I would like to thank the community for their support of our budget during the recent budget vote and election. I thank the five people who ran for the board, and congratulations to Lucian and John on their reelection, and to Jim for his election as a new member to the board. And a huge thank you to all the staff who helped make reopening seven through 12 take place this week, made it a reality. And just a reminder, the board is only going to have one meeting in June. It'll be June 14th, which is a change of dates. So we'll put more information out on the website, but I just wanted to mention that. Thank you. Okay, next item of business is the consent agenda.
Mrs. Bryan, before, would you like to do student reports?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
You should have stopped me items ago, Josh. I am so.
That is okay.
I am so sorry.
Do the best for life.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Of course.
For keeping me on track, and I would like to turn this over to Josh and Giselle.
Thank you. So starting with Willow Avenue Elementary School. Willow Avenue celebrated Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week at the beginning of the month. We are very fortunate to have an amazing staff that goes above and beyond every day for our students. We were very excited to be able to celebrate them. Fourth-grade students at Willow Avenue took a trip to the middle school. They participated in a scavenger hunt to learn about their new school. They also got to meet their middle school staff and ask some expert middle schoolers questions. Most important questions were what you can buy on the snack line and do you have recess? We are all about frogs this month at Willow. Our kindergarten students discovered a new frog species, and these frogs are hopping on the posters of their frogs. And our third graders are ending their frog unit by creating freaky frog trading cards. These cards will contain information from their research on their freaky frog, and they will get to present them to do one another. Our second graders learned about caterpillars and butterflies. They were able to watch each stage of the metamorphosis of the caterpillar in their butterfly houses. They even drew themselves as a butterfly. We are all looking forward to the fun activities at Willow and the PTO are planning for the remainder of the school year. Moving on to Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. Teacher Appreciation Week was held from May 3rd through May 7th. Thank you to the PTO for putting together a theme for each day. For example, on Tuesday, the students were asked to bring in a flower or a picture of a flower to show their appreciation. Needless to say, each classroom had an array of beautiful flowers on display. The week culminated in a wonderful and COVID-safe luncheon. Math state testing was held on May 4th. Students put forth their best effort, and the entire faculty and staff are very proud of how the children handled the challenge. The testing went very smoothly with minimal disruption for the K through 2 students. On Friday, May 21st, the PTO hosted their third annual teacher raffle via Facebook. Teachers donated their time by creating an activity that students can participate in. This is a wonderful community-based fundraiser, and the children love spending extra time with their teachers. Thank you again to the PTO for putting together a virtual talent show. On Friday, May 28th at 6:30, it can be viewed live via Zoom. The students were super excited to participate and are looking forward to a great show. Finally, the fourth-grade students visited the middle school in person on Wednesday, May 19th. The middle school administration and members of the Counseling Department greeted them with open arms. The students participated in a scavenger hunt that brought them around the building with current fifth-grade students. It was a great introduction to life in the middle school, and thank you to Mrs. Palumbo and her staff. And finally, from Cornwall Elementary School. This past month at Cornwall Elementary School, we have been busy with events and preparing for the end of the school year. We would like to express our gratitude to all of the CES families for their generous donations to ensure our faculty members had a great Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. We would also like to extend a big thank you to our PTO who organized a special week of events. The staff was able to enjoy lunches, pies, cookies, and even a visit from the ice mother for a cool treat. It definitely made for an exciting week. The PTO has also been able to organize and host fun events for the students during the month of May. We had a mother-and-son kickball game where pizza and ice cream were provided, which was a highlight of my elementary school career. They also hosted a father-and-daughter movie night with fun craft stations and a photo booth set up to collect memories. They also have organized the raffle baskets for our school. Each class worked together, picked a theme, and brought items in for their baskets. PTO received some really great donations to raffle off, such as two kids' bikes, tickets to a New York Giants game, and various other donations from local businesses right here in Cornwall. Proceeds from the raffle sales will go toward future events and equipment for the students. Teachers and students have also taken advantage of the beautiful warm weather to get the students outside for lessons and new adventures. Mrs. Krill gets her kindergarten class out for nature walks almost every day, and her students really enjoy it. Mrs. Ridgworth, Mrs. McCabe, and their kindergartners got to dress up as butterflies for a day. They also used this to release their very own butterflies they raised from the cocoon stage. Mr. Schofield hatched ducklings with his second-grade class. Mrs. Connolly's third-grade class learned about composting and how to take care of a garden. Thank you to Mrs. Sandler and the master gardeners for coming in to show the kids several useful gardening tips. Our fourth-grade student council worked very hard to collect over 130 cereal box donations this past month. All cereal boxes were donated to the Hudson Valley Food Bank right here in Cornwall. Before the boxes were donated, Ms. Verden and the student council set up the boxes for a fun activity. Please check out the video on our Facebook page. In our last month here before summer break, we look forward to hosting the fourth-grade Moving Up Ceremony, Fun-Filled Field Days, and finishing this year strong. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Giselle.
Okay. Good news from Cornwall Central Middle School. CCMS successfully welcomed back their seventh and eighth-grade students. The halls are abuzz with life. It is wonderful to be able to see all of our students every day. Congratulations to our CCMS scientists who participated in the Science and Tech Expo. Students conducted research or studies related to science and technology and created a virtual presentation that was shared. Once again, our students' work and detail was amazing. Many thanks to the PTO for the wonderful teacher appreciation celebration. The staff at CCMS is so grateful to work in such a supportive community. Finally, CCMS has begun to welcome our fourth-grade students to the middle school. Fourth graders took a field trip to CCMS and were able to tour the building and learn all about all of the exciting things the future holds for them as middle schoolers. We look forward to hosting a fourth-grade parent night on June 1st. And finally, CCH's student report for May. During these past couple of days, the CCH's Drama Club performed the rendition of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee in the outdoor theater they made. Despite the blazing sun, many came out to see the show, resulting in a great turnout. Congratulations to all the performers and those who helped out with the show. Earlier this month was official signing day, and numerous athletes were celebrated. Some of the sports that our peers will be participating in beyond high school are football, track and field, and lacrosse. Way to go to our seniors, and we wish them luck on their future endeavors. Speaking of track and field, at the Lox Games... Speaking of track-and-field, at the Lox Games, the CCHS Dragons had top finishers in multiple events. Kerry Beloga placed first in the 3,200-meter run, and Mark Montero placed fourth in the 200-meter dash. Also, the boys varsity tennis team recently defeated Washingtonville 4 to 3. Singles players Zach Taub, Ryan Geller, and Owen Hurley won their matches to contribute to the win. In addition to athletics, the unified basketball team won their game against Monroe last week. Mario Borciello, Jade Tally, and Chad Wallace led the team in steals. Congratulations to all of our amazing athletes. In regards to the arts at CCHS, some student artists participated in the 2021 Congressional Art Competition sponsored by Representative Sean Patrick Maloney. Their art pieces were voted on by the community. Below are some of the art by our fellow Dragons that were in the competition on the physical report. In other news, CCHS is taking into account that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. In a designated area during lunch periods, students were able to make their own self-care plan and learn some tips about dealing with mental health. Some students wrote on their self-care plans that their goals included achieving happiness and independence. Finally, in terms of student morale, going back to in-person five days a week has helped make the school atmosphere feel more normal. The energy in the school has become more lively, and it really is such an amazing thing to be all together again. Josh and I and our fellow peers were reunited with students we haven't seen physically in a year. It's great to see and catch up with everyone before the school year comes to a close. We are at the final stretch to the end of such a different year, and we're also glad that we can finish this year off as a whole instead of being divided by screens. We are grateful for the hard work it took to get to this point and want to thank everyone who has helped make it possible to be reunited with our peers.
Thank you both so very much. And Giselle, you're gonna excuse yourself, and we excuse you, and we thank you so much. She has a very big test to study for, so we wish you well on that. And thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Josh, thank you for steering me back.
Of course, no worries.
Outstanding. I appreciate it. Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business can do so. Is there anyone that wishes to pull out any item? Okay. We also have an addendum that was added at about 5:30 tonight on personnel, and Mr. Dade will speak to that after we vote on this. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items 2 through 9. Do I have a motion?
No.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Mr. Dade.
Thank you. So as you know, we started the year off with a search for our high school principal that started back in the end of the summer of 2020. We promised the board and the community that we weren't going to settle for anything but top-notch, so even though we had to reopen the process a few times over the course of the year, it was a true testament to the saying that patience is a virtue. So we are thrilled to announce that we have found our next high school principal. Mr. Brian Piazza is currently an assistant principal at Carmel High School in nearby Carmel, New York. He is described as a collaborative leader who is student-centered and has a natural way about him of creating buy-in for very important decisions. In his references, I had two superintendents, his current principal, and others that he's worked with that have had nothing but remarkable things to say about Brian. So we had a chance to meet him tonight. We're going to schedule some time for him to come back to the high school to meet our faculty and our and our students before the year's end, but we couldn't be more excited to welcome Mr. Brian Piazza to the Cornwall High School family.
Thank you, Mr. Dade. Okay, now we're going to move on to new business. Update on COVID relief funding, Mr. Dade and Mr. Solomon.
All right. So I wish that this would have been a PowerPoint with lots of answers and zooming in numbers that we were able to solidify from the state. Unfortunately, the numbers are pretty much all that we still have as a definitive for this this funding. So Harvey and I are going to describe a few pieces. One, Harvey's going to start with the number side. How did we get to the approximately 5 million that is in our allotment from the state? And then I would like to finish off with some of the things that we know that we've talked about as business officials and superintendents over the past few weeks by way of webinars and the like, all under the premise that I need the community and board to remain patient, that we're still waiting for the details from the feds and the state with regards to specifics behind some of these this terminology. So we'll dive into that as well. So Harvey, if you could start with the allotment?
Sure. So as I mentioned previously, there's really two grants, two key grants that we got. The first one we want to talk about is what's known as the American Recovery Act, ARP. The total allocation, as you see on the sheet that I handed out, is a little more than 2.2 million in total. The period of fund availability, which means we as a district can access this money, spans from March 13th, 2020, which is in the past already, all the way to the end of September 2024. Okay? The application date, presently, right now, it's coming up this June 15th. It's completely extendable, which I think most every school district will end up probably doing, only because of the lack of definitive guidance on some key issues. And with regards to that total allocation, how it breaks out, it's not just a pot of money that we can just say, great, we got it, let's go spend it on what we need. It's broken up into two kind of pots. The first one, keep in mind that this money came from the federal government, okay? 90% of it is coming directly to the schools, okay? And that's why you see directly from the federal is 90%. So that 90% that came to the schools, we're getting what I will call undesignedated. There's no specific use for it that the government is mandating. That's 683,391. What they are mandating is that 20% of our allocation in that pool has to be specifically for learning loss. Now additionally, the feds released 90% directly to the schools. They gave 10% to the states to do with it as they see fit. And what New York State did was they provided of their 10%, they provided an additional 1% to schools to allocate for summer instructional programs, summer school, things like that. They also allocated 1% to after-school instructional programs. Each one of those dollar amounts equates to just under $200,000. So that's a lot of money. That's good money. And then the the state also allocated 5% to learning loss as well. So that was just short of $1 million. So all total, that's how we break out, and that's how we come up with that 2.2 million dollars. Okay? The next piece of this is what's known as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. The total allocation for this is just about 2.9 million. The period that we can use this goes from March 13th, 2020, again, a date in the past, to September 30th, 2023. As far as the application date, when we have to put in for this, they have not released that. That's to be announced. One of the open items of many. Now, as far as, you know, where did this money come from? As I indicated here, New York State received an allocation from two different pots of money. The federal government, under this CRESSA Act, had something that's known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, and that we received, as per the regs, 2.5 million. And then the government, the state government, received funds as well, and that was at the governor's discretion of how to use that. And from that amount, we're going to receive about 391,000. All totaled, 2.9, almost. It's important to note that much like the American Recovery Act, it's not as restrictive, where they're predetermining and telling us ahead of time, you must use it for this, you must use it for that. So in a nutshell, that is the breakup of what we are to receive. There's a lot of acronyms. There's a lot of terminology here. It's new. I apologize. It's new for everybody. But but this sheet kind of gives you a breakdown of what we're receiving.
Any questions just on the funding piece, knowing that I'm going to start describing a little bit of what we know so far of what the funding can be utilized for?
So Terry, I have a question, and it has to do with, I guess, what are the requirements in order to make the district available? I know that there are restrictions in some processes that have yet to be defined, but is there anything that's written in these acts that specifically say we must do something in order to avail ourselves of these funds?
Yeah, so one of the tasks that I that was due today, that was completed last week, was a series of assurances that Harvey and I went through to make sure that we were a district that would be available to the funding. None of it was rocket science. It was you would use the funding appropriately. You will not utilize, you aren't under the influence of a congressperson or or anything of that nature. It was really that, to that extent. So we completed those assurances. Those are basically checking that, yes, we will meet these general requirements. Now, we're waiting for the guidance of what constitutes some of the things that I'll go through, what really would qualify under some of those categories. But yeah, we are a district available to receive these funds.
Just as a follow-up to that, then, I heard from a different district that there was a requirement in order to get these funds of soliciting input from the public.
Yeah, I'm going over that.
Is that going to be part of your your second answer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Yep. All right. So let me dive into some of what we know so far with regards to eligible uses in broad strokes. Again, huge asterisk on this, that we're still waiting on specific guidance from from the state. So the first thing I just want to make sure that the community and board recognizes is that date that Harvey mentioned of the start date for these fundings, for this funding, 3/13/20. If we had received this funding back on 3/13/20, our year might have looked a lot, a lot different, because some of the eligible uses are things like technology, PPE for your district, how you establish a plan for continuity of instruction. So that's that's the frustration, is that some of these categories listed would have been categories that we would have utilized working into the 2021 school year. Looking forward, because we will still utilize all of this funding in a in a strategic manner, some of the other things that don't fall into those buckets of at the beginning of the pandemic would include things like still purchasing educational technology. That's still a need in the district. Addressing learning loss in a variety of ways. It does not just mean summer. Right now, due to the timing of this funding, we are expanding our summer offerings. We're still in the planning phases of trying to expand that to the 5th through 12th grade level. We already have a pretty robust 9th through 12th grade, but expanding that to include our middle school. Elementaries, we're really focusing on next year. We have to remember the balance of socio-emotional supports, and right now I'm not recommending a summer school for our young babies. There needs to be kids, go to the beach. There's time that will will catch up any needs of our of our elementary students. Some other options include improving indoor air quality. So remember, Harvey started talking about facilities, but we are seeing that it is a pretty narrow lens into facility enhancement. It's really through the guise of, do you need additional filters and air quality in your buildings to mitigate any further pandemics and the like? So it's not a renovation of an auditorium. It would be the air quality in a particular area. I'm sorry?
I'm talking about a chiller.
We were, we'll have to see if a chiller would constitute one of these. We'll wait for the additional guidance from from the state. Addressing the mental health services and supports is something that we've talked about as a board family and our community as well. So how do we build in those supports next year and the years to come? Some of the other things I won't waste the community's time with, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean the facilities. Again, this would have been great, looking back in time. Harvey is working his magic to see, you know, after we get the guidance, can we get reimbursed for a lot of money that we came to the board for, that we have to move around without, unbudgeted, for all the hand sanitizing stations in every single classroom, the PPE for our staff and and our students, all of that. We need to see if we can be reimbursed for that, and then that would open up funds for other items moving forward. So those are some of the things that we've been discussing just from district to district. Part of the process, as John mentioned, we're developing a survey that will go out either midweek or the beginning of next week. We're trying to figure out best timing for families because we're coming up on the holiday weekend. We don't want that to be a deterrent. We are going to be very specific with families of, we've gotten a lot of recommendations for what we should be doing. We're really going to ask them to look in the eyes of their kids of what they need. So don't say what the Sandler's need, but, you know, for my family, looking at my child, this is what I think that they need based on their experience with COVID. So let's not throw out a whole bunch of ideas that we think others need, but we're really going to ask each individual family, what does your child need based on his or her experience? So there'll be some qualifying, some information that we'll gather of what grade is your child currently in, what school and the like, so that we can really tailor those supports. But we will be developing a survey, asking that of our community. We'll also be asking our teachers and staff and our administrators, what do they think from the classroom lens, from the academic lens, our counselors, social workers, you name it, we're going to be getting that feedback, and then we'll develop our plan to move forward. Now, any other questions? Anything I missed, Harvey? Megan?
Terry, on the, you mentioned the the summer school. So is that like that beefed-up summer school program that you you're talking about for rolling out even this summer? Is that in expectations, in expectation that some of these funds will be available, or is that just something we're doing independent of the resolution, or the, you know, how this shakes out?
Yeah, literally asked Harvey that this this afternoon. So we're, unfortunately, we don't have a solid answer on that, but Harvey, I don't know what your best answer would be for for the summer, this summer.
Sure. I think, I think at the end of the day, we would be okay, barring, you know, anything out of the blue. What we're finding is that the the eligible uses are quite broad and flexible. The key here is that, and this is kind of an interesting part, you know, as I mentioned with the American Recovery Act, the period of funding availability is over four years. But yet, the application that we have to fill out, it's a single application for those four years in total. So we're making decisions now that we're guessing on down the road. We can change that. We can amend the application, much like we, you know, have to with other things. But the point is, they're being very broad, and I don't see any reason this falls, you know, summer school falls directly in line with what they're looking for. So even though we haven't done the application, we would be, I'm confident that we'd be okay getting we would be, I'm confident that we'd be okay getting reimbursed for it.
And just from a staffing standpoint, I mean, I don't know what the schedule cadence is for, you know, staffing summer school. But it feels like it would be late to add more programs. Is there any concern that we won't have the staff to fill that?
Couldn't have teed it up better. So what you'll notice is, we're not going to go out to the community with a definitive. That's why I said we're in the planning stages of a middle school. What districts are finding across the country is they're overcommitting and not finding the staff. This has been a really tough year on teachers and staff, and we're not getting the same type of interest that you might have in a normal summer. So we're going to put out a tentative posting very soon to see what kind of interest we generate here in the district before we turn around and tell families that we can definitely do it or not. We've all, this is data-based as well. So the middle school's already gathered data on what students would, would be most in need of, of this support. So we're going to have that staffing follow suit. But it's not as much as, as we thought. So we think we're going to be in good shape.
And let's say, you know, as we go into next year, let's assume we have some clarity on, you know, what we can use the money for. It seems, you know, learning loss is defined specifically in one place. But then, the rest of it is also essentially learning loss as well. I mean, it's instructional programs, after-school instructional programs. That seems encouraging from that standpoint. Do we have a, you know, do we have a sense yet? Or is it just too early to tell what those after-school instructional pieces would be? And, you know, how we're, what process are we going to go to staff and, you know, determine all that stuff to?
And I'll have Megan chime in. But I think we would have an interesting dialogue as a community about what learning loss really is, as compared to what. As, if we look at sanitized testing, that's even been optional this year for the most part. So I, speaking from, we're going to be asking our teachers just that. But for me, it's far too early to tell. Because what are we comparing it to is kind of where we're sitting now. At the high school level, it's a little cleaner, because it's, you know, if you're not passing a course, credit recovery, needing to pass some exams. It gets much trickier as you get into the younger age groups. But Megan, you want to chime in here?
Sure. So, one of the things that's going to be crucial in the survey is going to be, you know, where our focus will be for building those after-school programs, specifically on the lower level. Because when you have the kids coming in early or staying after, you want to make sure that it's going to be beneficial, it's going to support their growth. And so we're working to say, is that where we need to put it? Or does it need to be built into their actual existing day? So, it's really very premature for this. I can tell you, like Mr. Day just said, on the high school, it is based on students who have, are not going to be passing a subject. And typically, that would have resulted in an exam for regents in August, which has been canceled. But we're still going to run that program, because it's crucial to give our kids these opportunities. So, we never shut the door on that. All of those students are being identified currently. In addition, we are identifying students from 5th going into 6th, 7th, and 8th that would qualify for what we're going to call a jumpstart institute. It's not summer school, you're not failing. But we want to make sure that you have those foundational blocks to be progressive as you move forward and help to support that need. On the elementary level, we really feel strongly that, you know, we've had those kids with one teacher, one package for the year. I've said it continually throughout the year. We've held our data team meetings consistently throughout all of our buildings, on all levels. So we have a really good pulse check on our kids that need more support. But it's, how does that look? Like, what's appropriate for them on each level? So, a little premature for that, but that will be the focus of our summer work.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Sure.
Are we going to be doing, are you planning on doing any type of localized Cornwall assessments on our elementary students?
So we do assessments all year. So, we, on elementary, we conduct what's called the STAR assessment. That's done three times at a minimum. Sometimes it's done up to five times a year. In addition, we have all of our formatives that inform our daily instruction. And our summative assessments, which are end of unit tests and so on. And we also use iXL to assess our students on top of all of our reading assessments for where the students are progressing in their, in their reading literacy. So, that has been ongoing.
Okay. I was just curious, because obviously, on the upper levels, you already have that in place, being able to assess. On the younger, on the lower levels, I wasn't sure if coming in to the new school year, if we had any other assess, just as I said, nothing from the state. I'm not talking about testing and read, just to get an idea of where they're at and what they've done over the past year.
Right. And I think it's important, too, to remember that, like you said, with the state, those are for really, on the elementary, for your 4th grade students. Because 3rd graders, it's the first time they would have taken that assessment. So that's one dip for just 4th grade. So, every year, we look at the whole package. You know, where did our kids come from? Have they come to a data meeting prior? You know, is this a kid that all of a sudden is experiencing issues? Have they been on our radar? Have they previously received AIS? And now maybe they're stumbling? So, thankfully, because we've been in since the beginning of the year, we feel really good with that work. It's been consistent.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more, maybe this is for Terry or for Harvey. I know the CRESSA, however we're pronouncing that acronym, seems pretty, pretty open. Is there a sense yet that it would be, capital would be eligible under that? Or is it, is even that still too early?
The only, the only capital that's a potential is on the American Recovery Act right now.
That's 683?
That's the 683, correct. That's right.
And even that's just potential?
Until we get greater clearance, yes.
Okay, got it. Great.
Terry? Another quick question. The money that was obviously that we could have used but weren't given during that 3/13/20 period of time? Can, when you talk about PPP, is there a way to take that money this year and use it toward budgeted funds for our cleaning supplies? And, I mean, it's PPE, just because we're not in a pandemic. Can that be used in that, in that case for our supplies?
Yeah, Harvey, you want to take that?
Sure.
You got that look on your face.
No, I mean, Harvey and I, three hours ago, were answering all these questions with each other, so.
Okay, no, it's fine.
Right. So, you know, a big question might be, why in the world would they even move everything back to March 13th of 20?
They don't want to give it to you.
And because, you know, how are you going to do the planning and all that? And I believe it's because one component of this is, they're going to allow us to get reimbursed, so to speak, for the PPE that we've laid out since that point in time. That's my sense. To that point, if we, if we were to utilize some of that money for that, realistically, we would actually be receiving that money next year. Okay, by the time this all happens, we'd be receiving it in 21, 22. One of the open questions that the state has acknowledged is that we're not sure how a district should treat that. Because you're getting reimbursed in one year for an expense you had in a previous year. Is, you know, how are we going to allow the districts to use that money? And that's an open question that we just, no one knows. We're waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, could you clarify one thing, or maybe Megan? It sounds like we have, you know, metrics that are in place that we kind of gauge where we are at any one time in terms of what I'll say is a nebulous term, learning loss, right? Wasn't aware of that term until COVID hit, but I think I understand the purpose behind it. Do we have, and common sense suggests there has been learning loss, right? I mean, it just, the manner of instruction has changed. People have adapted on the best that everyone can, from students to teachers to administrators. I get it, parents as well. Is the data that we've collected support the notion that there has been learning loss?
So I'll go first and then Megan chime in. So, I've kind of taken this from the standpoint of, I have one kiddo who experienced everything Cornwall, and two that have been virtual all year, back in Fairfax. So, as a dad, asked that same question back in, back in Fairfax. And I think the approach that they've taken is what we've taken here. We're responsible for students achieving New York standards per grade level. So that's benchmark number one. Have we been able to have students exhibit proficiency in all of the New York standards? Two, with regards to reading level and math, coursework and the like. This is what Megan was talking about, that at every school, if there's a parent that has not had a progress report on their child over the course of this year, then please let me or Megan know. That's been ongoing to see kind of where our students fall in all the metrics per school. So I think the only way that I feel that we can measure loss from, for this year would be to do a year-to-year analysis on a common metric. Whether it be any of the metrics that Megan mentioned with iXL, STAR, what have you, would be the only apples-to-apples that we could do as a district. I know as an entire state, the metric is coming. It's going to be looking at the last time that we took regents and our standardized assessments to the next point in time that we've done that. Because that'll be a district-by-district measure of, in 1819, Cornwall was experiencing this proficiency and the like. In 2122, this is where, where we are. So I feel like that's the only way that we could really look at learning loss, that it would be too early. We don't have a definitive metric standardized test-wise this year, because they were all over the place in the standardized test that we did give, had questions on it that were practice questions in previous years. So, it's not an accurate measure. But that's my first, first step at the answer. But Megan, learning loss?
Yeah, no, I completely agree with all that. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I feel like we're in a good position, because we have been in for the whole year. But that's not to negate the fact that kids are struggling in different ways. So what does that look like, you know? And that will be the work that needs to be done and uncovered throughout the entire next year and planning throughout the summer. I would argue, too, you know, what is learning loss? So, we spent so much time this year working on what are the power standards? And how do we make sure that our kids have achieved the content? Without, you know, in the beginning of the year, people were, they're only going to, kids are only going to get 50%, 50%, no, that's not true. They're going to get the whole content. But where we used to maybe dive this deep in each area, now we're getting the power standards and we're making sure that they have the content. But perhaps those enriching opportunities aren't there. I would say learning losses, we've had to go back to rows and kids not working in teams. We've spent so much time having kids from a very young age working in teams and collaborating on group projects. And now that's something that we've had to get very creative with. STEAM has had to take a little bit of a backseat. We've done our best this year to continue moving forward with it. But with all the protocols in place, you really, it can't be to the extent that we've gotten ourselves to. So, to answer your question, John, yes, there is, there's definitely going to be gaps. And we do a great job in a regular year. We've done a tremendous job, I think, this year, trying to even overemphasize, like, where are they, we don't want to miss, we don't want to miss. But that work will have to happen, of course. And then I think, looking at the other end of it, like, we have lost opportunities for moving us forward in different avenues that we had anticipated being there already at this point.
So, just to clarify, we're still in the process of defining the problem. And I think if that's, we can all agree on that. I think it's important for everyone to understand that, right? We haven't defined what learning loss, the extent of it has been. And part of this exercise is to try to, you know, establish that, that level.
Right.
Right?
Right. And I think when you speak with our teachers, too, I mean, they, they feel, I mean, when the kids all came back together, they were like, wow, we really are at a good place. Like, we are where we typically are this time of the year, which is a credit to all the work that's been done, both virtually and in person. But we won't know until next year, really, like, oh, that was a hole. You know, we've got to patch that up. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Board of Ed Scholarship. And Louis, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody, I just, I sent a note out a couple of weeks ago to us all. I think it'd be a wonderful gesture or idea if we could, the nine of us here, start perhaps a scholarship fund for a deserving student. I wouldn't dare to say not of our choice, but of some committee's choice, or I would suggest the school's choice. And I would suggest that first steps are, the nine of us, if we, if we agree loosely to the concept of starting this scholarship, that we maybe be, as a committee or a separate committee, and, you know, hone it in, hone it in. I guess step one would be saying, yes, we agree, or we don't, with further information, that's fine as well. And we could agree on, you know, and then, you know, hone this in. You know, there's going to be questions to be had, there's going to be, you know, monies, how much, and who, and so on. I would imagine that, I shouldn't say I imagine, though the research that I have done, it's the donor who puts the criteria together for who is a recipient. And we could, we could establish that with maybe guidance from the district as well, some, you know, guidance counselors to maybe where there's a need. You know, maybe there's a hole there that we can, we can help fill. And then, there's, from what I understand, there's, there's two main ways to manage this. Is, one, the donor or donors hold the money. They take custody of the money, and they, and they give it to the district, to the recipient, and when the time comes. Or the donation happens and the district manages the money. I would be an advocate for the latter. I mean, there's case law on the first reason that we shouldn't do that, you know? So I would say we stay away from that. But, I guess the first step is, you know, floating it by everybody. And if it, if it gets legs and we want to take it to the next step, certainly we can have the public discussion, I'm fine with that. Or we can, you know, put a committee together, and, you know, I'll obviously be happy to be part of it. And, you know, hone this thing in and maybe present, you know, at the next meeting or further meeting. You know, Matt's leaving the board, I'd like to get the $100 from him before he goes. But, that'd be nice. That'd be a nice, you know, departing gesture on Matt's behalf. I said $100, I think $1,000 is a nice round number, if we could start it, you know? And then maybe future boards can add to it, and maybe, maybe it can turn into something that gets, you know, gets some legs.
I had responded to your email. I think it's a great idea. And I think it's important that the public realize that this is not public money, that it is a donation from the board itself, the existing board every year, whichever board that is. So that people understand it's a, it's a personal donation. And it's a way of us recognizing as a Board of Education, every year, the work of our students. That's, that's the first thing. I've, I've been involved in two, in two different types of scholarships. One was when I was at the president of the special at PTA. And that one, of course, was, the criteria for each one was set up very specifically. And that is done by probably a small, I would think, a small committee on the board with perhaps a guidance counselor, as you said, being part of that committee, however it's done. The other one was a scholarship for a student. And at that time, what we made the criteria was mostly a lot about public service. As the board, it was a board, at Monroe, it was a board scholarship. And it had to do with not scholastic as much as, as public service and things like that. And all that can be determined by the board. But I think the idea is a wonderful one. And I think it's, I think it's very nice for a student to have that. Larry?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a phenomenal idea. We had talked briefly about it, and I had said, yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea. And I like the idea of a public service component of it.
So would, is there any, anyone who is opposed to this? Or in general, is the board, John, go ahead?
So, I'm not opposed. I think it's, it's meritorious, I think we should pursue it. The devil's in the details. And I can tell you, from someone who's handed out lots of scholarships over the years, and actually as a board member of a not-for-profit charity, it costs a lot of money, right? And the only reservation I have is, is what the details would look like. I love the, the public service aspect of it, right? Typically, when everybody thinks of scholarships, they think of the best, the brightest, the best-looking, all that kind of stuff. I don't think, you know, there's a underserved element that I think the board could fill that gap on. And, you know, I would volunteer to be part of that task. And, you know, I would volunteer to be part of that task force or exploration committee to actually make it happen. And more importantly, not just make it happen, but then make it a legacy longevity, that it's, once we do it, it's here forever. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And that's the hard part, because we're all not gonna be here, right? There's gonna be turnover on the board and...
Yeah, we want it to be self-sustaining.
Self-sustaining. That's the key aspect of it. And that, you know, fundraising and all that stuff would go a long way to making it self-sustaining. But I'm all in.
Okay. So if, how about for the... We do an official vote at the next meeting? We'll do that.
Sure.
Louis and I could come up with, I guess, like, an outline for it. Not set up a committee yet, because we will do that for all the parameters and all that. But just to come back with what we would be doing and then set up the committee to establish all of that.
I mean, that's a logical progression, I guess, but...
Because it wouldn't be for this year.
There's a part of that seems somewhat bureaucratic, not to suggest it's... But if we're all in favor, let's just take volunteers, vote on it now, and then have that committee go in God and figure it out about the details. I think, since it's the board's decision, I think...
We make a motion?
Yes.
The motion sets us in action. And then beyond that, we can hone this in with the committee.
And then, you know, provide the, if that committee has a mission... Give that committee a mission, a deliverable to come back to the full board, you know, by whatever date, whatever date that we found, you know, to be reasonable.
July would be fine after we got Matt's donation.
So then I'd like to make a motion to establish a Board of Education scholarship... I'm not gonna say fund yet, but a scholarship effort endeavor.
Exploratory committee?
Exploratory committee?
Yeah. I'd second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Louis, and thank you all. That's, we'll be moving right along with that. And I think we could use your input, Mr. Sandler.
No, I think it's an excellent idea, for sure. And I really like, Mr. Sandler, what you said with the underserved component, because, you know, we have our top math scholar and our top science scholar and it's very much, you know, very high up. There's an underserved component that we can tap into, for sure. And I think that we could, you know, try to find that in some way.
Thank you, Josh. Okay.
You guys recognize the irony here, though. Like, I love the public service element, and that's the first thing I thought of. And I would be a hard advocate of that. But we are setting the expectation by giving a monetary award for a public service, kind of setting the wrong expectation for it. It's gonna be the rest of your life. Maybe we all contribute a pat on the back. But no, I, that's all I thought of, but yes, let's do it.
Okay, shut your mic off. That's it. I'm cutting you off. Okay. All right. We're up to recognition of visitors. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to get up and speak, you have three minutes, and I ask you to tell us your name. Okay, thank you. Closing comments from the board. Josh, we'll start with you.
Sure thing. So firstly, huge, huge thank you. Giselle said it already, but massive thank you to district administration, high school administration, middle school also for our seventh grade. We are back. And I say that in like, you know, the most immaculate smile I've had all year, because it truly has meant so much. We, on the first day, unfortunately, I wasn't there for the first day. I was the only student taking an AP. But I heard and I experienced on Tuesday that, like, we haven't seen these people in person for over a year and a half, you know? And it just, like, takes you a second to think about that. And just being able to be all together once again in this form has been so joyful for all of us, for sure. I wanted to thank Mrs. Argenio and Mr. Dade for being a part of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. It was super fun. I know there was many surprises and you went along with them very well. I even had to hold you back for some of them, Mrs. Argenio, but it was excellent. And it was very fun. So thank you very much for the community, the advisors, everyone who supported us and everyone who helped us in this once seemingly impossible endeavor, which we pulled off and was a huge light for our students. And, yeah, I'd say that's pretty much it for now. Thank you so much, because it really has meant very much with this change in instruction. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Josh. John?
Yeah, so, wow. Great achievements happening. We're such a high-achieving district that now that everything is back, I think things are just going to hopefully fall in place. I know that there's a lot of work to be done, especially as it pertains to what Terry and Megan and Harvey were talking about in terms of the learning loss. But I think there is not a better team around that's gonna cure that for a school district. And I thank you all for your efforts where you've gotten us so far. But we're, more importantly, we're gonna fill those gaps and you're part of that solution, and I'm grateful for that. So thank you. I want to offer congratulations to the Foreign Affairs Team. What an awesome accolade, right? National, eighth in the nation. That's, you know, Cornwall's always been on the map. But now, I think, the font and the bold on it is a lot thicker than it was before. And so Josh, you and the team there, just exceptional. My hat's off to you. Fantastic. Also want to congratulate the new high school principal, Brian Piazza. You know, I was at the Drama Club production, the matinee, on Sunday. And for the life of me, I was just challenged by, why are they calling it the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee? But now I understand, because, you know, Mr. Piazza's coming from Putnam County. So I guess there was some kind of synergy there.
That was coordinated.
You know, and I see, you know, Mr. Heinz out there, so I'm sure he had a hand in all that, too. But that's just fantastic, you know? We are getting back to a certain new normal, not to coin a term that's been used previously. But it is gonna be new. I hope it's better. And I think it's incumbent on everybody to have that expectation and that hope. And I know the team that we have here, the communities and involvement, the budgets that's passed, and the new blood that's coming into the board is gonna, to make it so. The last thing I want to say is about the district. And it has to do with the talent that the district produces. We all know Josh, Giselle, and those that have come before him and Giselle previously as board representatives. But I have to say, I was really impressed by Richard Schaffner and his performance during the election. And if he is an indicator of the product that this district turns out, we all should, like, hold our heads very, very high, because he carried himself like a true professional. What great character. And my hat's off to you. Great job.
Thanks, John. Jeez. No, I completely second that. And, yeah, Richard, you ran a phenomenal race. And Jim, congratulations. This was a, not just an interesting budget and board season, but just, I mean, an extraordinary year. You don't really get an opportunity in education to, you know, take a lap. But I think that this is as close as we get. When you look at the challenges that we face this year, how we came through them, what it took to come through them, I just want to, you know, take the opportunity for hats off to Terry, Harvey, Megan, extended also to Zig, Walter, Sean, everybody else down the line. You know, we sat in a lot of board meetings this year where the mood around the community was not all that positive. And just on that aspect alone, I commend all of you for the job that you did, the professionalism that you showed. And really, it went beyond professionalism and it was just character that you showed, because I know that's really... Professionalism only goes so far, and that's when your character takes over. And I just thought, maybe lesser people would have cracked in certain circumstances, and you didn't. It didn't even seem to come close, so I very much appreciate that. And, yeah, Josh, I mean, my god, the Foreign Affairs. I have read one issue of Foreign Policy Magazine, but that's the closest that I've gotten. So I commend you for an extraordinary achievement. And there was a reason that I only read one, because I thought, this is not for me. And then the Putnam County Spelling Bee. That was actually, this is, that was the last, I saw a performance of that pre-COVID. It was the last pre-COVID thing my wife and I did, and it's hysterical. I'm sorry, I was not able to make it. This is a prelude to my next plug, but I've been too busy volunteering for. Drumroll. June 5th, everybody, is the Cornwall Elementary School production, which is being written and directed by a very overworked volunteer. So I think you should all go and support it. We may even be able to write in a role for Terry, now that I realize that he's such a willing participant. Stay tuned. Finally, is it finally? Did I have anything more to say? I don't even know. No, just a thank you to the community for the budget. I know this was a strange year. And to everybody who voted, you know, it's greatly appreciated. The, this works when people show up. And the fact that we got a really good turnout, I thought was the most encouraging part of the night. And finally, I almost forgot, of course. Congratulations to Louis and John for a great race themselves and very excited to be working with you for, well, at least the next year and then hopefully more after.
Thank you, Brendan. Matt?
Okay. Thanks to Giselle, Josh, always for your reports. Again, not a lot new. Kudos to the Foreign Affairs Club for their ranking nationally. Terry, Megan, Harvey, always thank you for everything you do. You know, congratulations and a welcome to the new high school principal, Brian Piazza. And again, just to echo really what Brendan just said, you know, it's, you know... Thankful for our community for coming out and showing up to vote and getting this budget passed. And John and Louis, congrats. Jim, I think you'll make a great addition to an already pretty strong board. So congratulations to you, and that's all I got.
Well, first of all, I forgot to mention that the Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on June 9th. So I've got that out of the way. I want to thank Mr. Davis Hale for a scholarship donation that we voted on tonight. And thank you to Ariel Yarmus for obtaining a grant for our high school library. Those were glanced, you know, we kind of glanced over them rather quickly. But I think that those were two very nice actions on their part. The play, Josh, my wife and I belly laughed on a couple of... And especially your song. So we won't go any further than that. But that was, it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. So I want to congratulate you, your, all the people that work with you and you work with, and your teammates. You're, you know, you've been an all-around good addition to this board. And thank you. And thank you to the, to our community. It makes us feel good to realize that all the hard work that has gone into what we have done this year paid off. So again, thank you all.
Yes. I want to first of all thank the public for approving... Oh, I keep forgetting. I'm sorry. I want to thank the public for approving our budget. I know it's a, it's not just a hard COVID year, but it's been a hard year for people financially within our community, within a lot of communities. I also wanted to congratulate John and Louis for being re-elected. And to Jim, I'm looking forward to meeting you and seeing you on the board. I hope you're ready to have, I always say, if you want people not to like you, join a school board. So let's keep that in mind when you're in a grocery store at budget time. But I also wanted to thank, we're coming to another, my first year on the board here, and I've been incredibly impressed, not just with the district and the administrators, but with my colleagues on the board. And frankly, the civil way that business is handled in Cornwall. And I was especially glad to see that some, what I would consider, you know, people that run for a volunteer position on a school board. It's a type of thing that, yes, it's giving back to the community. And it's also, I think it, I know it does something for me. It makes me feel like giving back and positive. But I wasn't very happy to see certainly some of the negative personal comments against some of the candidates. And I am very, very pleased to see that the public saw it for what it was and didn't let that type of scurrilous comments change what is right about Cornwall and what we need to bring back to our country, quite frankly, which is civility. But in any case, I thank everyone for that. I thank our high school board members here for their service. And as I said, coming in, just thinking, another, you'll think, oh, the good old days. The good old days. But good luck to you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You can do something? Okay. Yeah, I'd like to open with thanking the community for coming out to vote. It's important that everybody, you know, performs that civic duty. A lot of people, you know, fought long and hard to have that available to us. And it's important that we do that and exercise that right. And I appreciate everybody's getting out and voting and exercising that right. That's what, you know, keeps us wheeling, keeps us moving. And I thank implicitly those who voted for the budget, because in support of our district. I think we have a lot of work yet to do with this board. John, congratulations for your next three years. Jim, looking forward to working with you. I know I'm looking forward to another three years here and doing what I can do to try and, you know, keep that peg moving forward. Josh and Giselle, thank you posthumously to Giselle. Congratulations on all your accolades. I don't have to say it. Everybody else has said it this evening. You know, you had a hard performance out there with the heat. A hard song you sang, but you nailed it. So well done. Yeah, I think it's fantastic you guys were able to perform in, you know, that unique environment and really reinvented it and got out there and got it. I love attending the events. I'll be at, I think there's another one coming up at C A S? There's another?
That's right. It's June 5th at 4:00 PM.
It slipped my mind. It slipped my mind. So I do enjoy, I love, especially the little ones. I love seeing them, you know, they're fantastic. So I'm looking forward to getting out there and participating in that as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone in this community who felt it was time to speak out against the personal attacks on my fellow board members. I also want to clear the record, I will own what I say, but please don't twist my words and misquote me on social media. At our last meeting, I clearly stated that there are those that call us, those of us sitting here on the board, liars. Not what I was erroneously misquoted as saying. I truly thank everyone, my board, including our high school reps, our staff, and our community for everyone's continual passion and perseverance through the strangest of times. Congratulations to the Foreign Affairs Club, outstanding, and to all of our performance this week. Thank you all very, very much. We are now going to reconvene into executive session. We will, for continued personnel matters, we will not be conducting any decisions at that time. I need a motion to convene into executive session?
To move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all for coming this evening.